I wait with starting because there is still no public. So I think they are still in the lobby, in the general session. Yesterday, they were also a little bit later, so we start something between 9:17 and 9:20. I see that some public is coming in. We will still wait for one minute. I will start at 9:18, so that people have the possibility to join. So I will start talking in about one and a half minutes. We start. There has been some public coming in. We will see what will coming further. Welcome to the special session Innovative District Heating and Cooling and Seasonal Storage at the conference Crossing Borders 2021 Parkstad. I'm hosting the session, so I'm Zeke van Rohe. I'm lecturer Sustainable Energy at Zuid. This session is organized by Zuidhoger School and supported by the Netherlands Enterprise Agency. But we have some regulations during this session. It's a little bit less tight than in the parallel sessions. So there are the possibility to have one or two questions after a talk. But the main part will be at the end, at the last part of the session, where we do a questionnaire. The session is recorded, so be aware of it. And if you have questions that are more general or for one of the speaker, please mention that in the chat and mention also to which speaker you have the question. Innovative district heating and cooling can have a substantial contribution in the transition, energy transition in the Netherlands. On this moment in the Netherlands, we are very dependent on gas. The coming decade, we have to leave mainly on our dependency on gas. And district heating and cooling is of course a very good alternative. Also, district heating can play a role in the seasonal storage to avoid problems with new difficulties in the energy transition related to the demand and supply difference between winter and summer and day and night. In this session, we have four speakers. Of course, on this moment, I'm opening the session. After that, Paul Ramstag of the Netherlands Energy Agency, I found it much easier to call them RVO, will give an overview of the status of innovative district heating and cooling in the Netherlands. After that, Thijs Peepels will tell what are the possibilities and what is the province Limburg doing on energy transition and especially about the parts they do related to district heating and cooling and what they do to make an ecosystem in Limburg about their part. And after that, I think especially region that is very strong on district heating, the city region of Parkstad will tell what is happening there on this item. And Tim DeWort will tell during 25 minutes about that subject. The last presentation in the session is of course about one of the most interesting heating cooling systems we have on this moment in the Netherlands. I call it in Dutch the mine water project. And in the end, we will have a questionnaire and a discussion with all the authors in the session. I hope we will do the session in about one hour and a little bit more than one half hour. We try to close the session at 11 o'clock. The last part is this is not the only session we have people on this subject this year. RVO and Zuid will organize a number of sessions related to district heating and cooling. And we hope to do the next meeting is September, October in not in the normal way, so not online. And we will inform you about it. Then I like to give the floor to Paul Ramstag. He will tell an overview about district heating and cooling. Paul Ramstag is from RVO and he will explain again the English name. I found it still difficult to pronounce because we never use it. And I give the floor to Paul.
Yes, good morning, everybody, and thank you, Zeke. I hope you can hear me and everybody can hear me well. Thank you, and I will now try to share the slides. Let's hope this works as well. Can you see the slides? Perfect. I think it's okay. At least Zeke gives me a big thumbs up. So yeah, good morning, everyone, once again. Happy to be able to set the scene here and to tell you a little bit about one of the huge challenges in front of us within the energy transition, I would say, which is the heating and cooling transition. My name is Paul Ramstag. I work at the Netherlands Enterprise Agency. That's the official name in English, but in the Netherlands, we call it RVO or Raiksties voor de Nederlands. We are basically a department, a public body, a department of the Dutch Ministry of Economic Affairs and Climate Policy. And we are a very large agency covering many different fields. But an important field is the energy field. So you could say we are the central energy agency of the Netherlands. So we are somehow in the midst of the whole discussion about energy transition. But clearly also circularity is coming higher and higher on that agenda as well. And for that reason, we also welcome, let's say, this conference and happy to be able to support also this special session here. Yeah, let me, before, let's say, before taking you into this future of heating and cooling, I would like to start and look back a little bit. You know, the conference is called Crossing Boundaries. And this is about probably crossing boundaries between disciplines, between people. But I think another boundary which is interesting is also the boundary between the past, present and future. And that we should also try to cross or to connect. So let me take you back into history. 100 years ago, this is how, let's say, the Netherlands looked like and more specifically the southern part of the Netherlands, the region south of Limburg, which is called now Parkstad Limburg or Dutch mountains, whatever you prefer. The Netherlands were a coal country. Our energy system was based on coal. And that coal was being excavated in the south of the country, in the south of Limburg. And Herlen was the kind of capital of this coal mining region. So this picture is the station area of the city of Herlen. You see the huge coal mines that are located there. And what is interesting in a way, this was the start of industrialized coal extraction that would start somewhere in the 1920s of last century. People from all over Europe and the Netherlands, they came to this region to live there and to work there and basically to provide the energy for the rest of the country. And this situation lasted for many years. Steep ramp up, then there was a dip around the 40s when there were some issues with our eastern neighbors and then ramping up again after the Second World War. And this continued all the way into the, let's say, late 60s. And then all of a sudden, something happened. This guy came to the south. This guy was the predecessor of my boss today. He was the minister, Dutch Minister of Economic Affairs back then, 50 years ago, Job den Eil. He came to the south, to the Parkstad Limburg region, to the city of Herlen. And he gave his presentation, his lecture there. And here he announced something that nobody would have expected. The beginning of the end of coal. The coal mines, all coal mines in the Netherlands would be closed down. And that would happen actually very quickly within 10 years. And why? Not because we ran out of coal, but because there was another, a better alternative. We found in the north, in the northern province of Groningen, which was natural gas. And nobody in this audience probably would have believed it, but in fact, it happened. Mines were closed down within 10 years. We went into this transition towards gas. And in the region, this caused huge problems. Herlen was one of the richest cities of the Netherlands back then. Became one of the poorest cities after the closure. A lot of unemployment, a lot of social issues, et cetera. But the transition was performed and the whole country was somehow connected to gas. So the age of gas started in the Netherlands. And in a way, you could say this age of gas is still continuing. We are still addicted to gas. We are still connected to gas. However, things are changing. And just as people back then could not believe that there would be an end to the coal era, probably many still cannot imagine that there will be at some point an end to the gas era. However, exactly 50 years after this announcement of my previous boss, pre-previous boss, my previous boss, Henk Komp, the Minister of Economic Affairs, announced in 2015 this statement, which reads in Dutch, 'Kabinet van Gostvoerwaming.' So the government basically stated that we should no longer use in future natural gas just to heat our houses, but we should look for alternatives. And it states like waste heat or water from the earth, which would be of course geothermal energy. So you could say this is again the beginning of a new end. And in this new era, probably water will be hot. Now, coming back to the subject of heat. There's a lot of discussion about energy transition. But many times people talk about solar, talk about wind, you know, maybe about electric cars, et cetera. But the heat subject somehow is neglected or has been neglected in the past in many countries. Luckily, Netherlands is catching up here. But if you look at the numbers in terms of final energy consumption, then it's really quite clear, I would say, that electricity is only one quarter and transport is only one, the other quarter. Whereas the heat demand is half of the final energy demand. So if we want to have an energy transition, then really we have to look into the heat transition. Heat transition is key, and this is somehow the big elephant in the room that nobody is talking about. This is changing in the Netherlands because of, I would say, on the one hand side, environmental issues. But there is another aspect to this and a different angle. We're burning gas, natural gas, which is a high quality fuel. And we do that for a large extent just to heat our houses. And that is a rather low quality demand. You want your house to be at 20 degrees centigrade. You don't need to burn a high quality fuel that was created over millions of years to do that. You burn it at several hundreds degrees. You can do that maybe for your industries, for high quality products. But why do that just to make your houses warm? That is in a way not the smartest thing to do. And this principle, quality of energy, which is called exegy, was already basically quoted by Slovenian professor in the 50s of last century, Zoran Drand, that explained that it's basically a destruction of the quality of energy that you're doing here. Now, looking a little bit wider into Europe, you can see the orange part of the diagrams on the left hand side is the heat consumption in the different countries. And you can see basically all over Europe that heat is the largest chunk of the energy demand. The other thing is on the right hand side, and that is a quite specific thing. There we have the seasonal variation in demand. And what is interesting here is to see that electricity and mobility, the black and blue, are pretty stable over the year. You have daily and weekly variations, but in the long run, it's rather stable. However, the orange part, which is the heat part, has a huge difference between summer and winter, which is clear. In the winter, we need heat. And actually, if we would be able just to take the heat from summer and, you know, store it for winter and vice versa, maybe take the coal from the winter into the summer, we would have solved a big part of our energy challenge. Now zoom again, again, on the Netherlands. Like I said, heat is about half of the energy demand. But then look at the graph in the left lower corner. This is the amount of renewable heating and cooling we have in the different European countries. And on the left hand side, you can see that Sweden, you probably cannot read it, but it's Sweden, which is the second bar, which is the only country that has about 60 or even 70% of renewable heating and cooling. But all the others are really quite low, well below 50%. And the Netherlands is last in row with only 6% renewable heating and cooling. So there is really a huge challenge in front of us. And if you wonder what is the country on the very left hand side that is almost at 100%? Well, that is Iceland. They are using geothermal heat to heat their homes. And actually, they are subsidizing the poor people that still have to use fossil fuels to get warm. So we have a huge challenge in front of us, and that is even larger because next year already, we will shut down our largest gas field in the province of Groningen. We had hoped to exploit it longer, but that will not be the case because of earthquake issues. And also, let's say, the urgency of the energy transition is of course helpful there. And that means that we have to reduce U2 emissions by 50% in 2030 already. This is the agreement we have already made in the Netherlands. And in the building sector, it means that by 2050, of course, we have to decouple all seven million dwellings and change to renewable way of heating and cooling. But already by 2030, we have the ambition to do that for one and a half million existing dwellings. And that is really a large challenge, I would say. But it means that already now, all the municipalities in the Netherlands, they have to, they're obliged to come up with heat transition plans by the end of the year to show how they want to do this. Now, what are the alternatives for heating with natural gas? In a way, it's rather straightforward, you could say. Either you go for an individual solution or you go for a collective solution. Now, if you're on the countryside and you have, you know, your houses spread out all over, then it's quite clear that the individual solution is the way to go. But if you're in cities or even in village centers, there where you have, you know, a denser population, most probably a collective solution like district heating will be cheaper and more energy efficient than the individual solution. So from a societal point of view, that is most probably in many cases the cheaper option and probably this will be about half of the country where this is the case. Now, another trend we see is that the temperatures in, for instance, traditional district heating were very high. But we are now moving towards lower and lower temperatures. And the mine water project that will be presented later is a good example there where they use low temperature district heating grids. And the advantage here is if you move your temperatures to medium or low temperatures, you can use many more renewable or waste heat sources like geothermal, like solar thermal waste heat. And you can combine it again with storage of heat. So in a way, talking about crossing boundaries, you know, we are used to look at the surface, which is obvious that we look there, there are our cities, our greenhouses, et cetera. But another border to cross is basically the border between surface and subsurface. And the miners from the Parkstad, from the south of Limburg, they would know that when you go deeper, it's getting hotter. And, you know, it's about 30 degrees per kilometer that it's getting hotter. So the underground, the earth is heat and the heat is under our feet. So we could actually use that if you have the proper underground to extract the heat, heat your cities, heat your greenhouses, you know, and be independent of the gas supply. And the other thing, and that is even less on the agenda, I would say, is that we can use the underground as a huge buffer. And we could store the sun, the solar heat from summer or waste heat from summer that's not being used in the underground and then use it in winter. And that is also one thing that already Mine Water Project took on. But more projects are on the verge of being realized now, I would say. So that's another interesting innovation. Then there is another perspective. If you look at this in terms of energy and money flows. And if you look at the present situation, you know, when we will close down the Groningen field next year, we will have to import our gas to continue to, you know, to be warm in winter. And that means we have to import it either from Russia or we will import shale gas that has been fracked somewhere in America or elsewhere. And that will enter the country somehow and come to the region to get us warm. But that will mean that of course, the region and the people in the region will have to pay for it. And then money is exported in a way. It will not stay in the region. And at the same time, you will still be, we will still be dependent on others. Now, there are talks about, for instance, hydrogen and biomass, which is very interesting and challenging. And I think definitely an industry, an interesting solution. But if this hydrogen or biomass would have to be imported from outside the region or even outside the country, then you still have this continued dependency and you will continue to export your euros. Whereas if you would be able to use local or regional energy sources also for heating like geothermal, like solar thermal, like aquathermal, waste heat, you know, and that in combination with storage, day storage or seasonal storage, the euros would stay in the local economy, in the regional economy, creating local jobs and local knowledge and creating independence. And if you talk about circularity, and this is, you know, the main theme in a way of this conference, then this is also an aspect of circularity, that you solve your problems to yourself to the extent you can do it. This doesn't of course mean that you should not import anything. But what you can solve at home, you could, you should solve at home, I think. And it's to the benefit of the people. Now, can you do it? That is the question. And there's, you know, there are many people having doubt whether this can be done. But if we look at the example of Sweden, you can see that they managed to have a transition from a kind of oil-based fossil fuel-based heating system towards district heating in combination with heat pumps, you know, that are now forming over 70% of the heat source for heating and cooling. So it's rather a matter of, I would say, political will or societal will than that it wouldn't be possible technologically. And if we then zoom into the province of Limburg, then you can see that in terms of district heating and cooling, where we stand, you know, in general, you could say Netherlands doesn't have that much experience with district heating and cooling except for some of the large, more old fashioned grids in the large cities. But that's less than 10%. And that is, you know, the reason is because we had so much gas, so we are addicted to gas. But if you look at the developments in Limburg, I think Limburg is definitely one of the frontrunners in this field in terms of innovative district heating and cooling, not only in the Netherlands, but I would even say Europe wide or even worldwide. Mine Water Project is really definitely one of the most innovative examples on the European scale. But also projects like Hune Net and Sittat Gilen are really paving the way, I would say, and are moving forward. And we have other initiatives or project underway as well in Maastricht and Roemond, but also in Venlo. And one thing maybe not many people realize is that already 1200 years ago, when Charlemagne basically united Europe, and he was a man from the region. He came, he was born near Liège in Belgium, but is now Belgian. He moved his capital to Aachen, to the city of Aachen. So in a way, the former capital of Europe was based there in Aachen. And he moved it there, why? Because of the geothermal wells, you know. So it was there because of renewable energy, because of geothermal. Because in Aachen, you find just across the border, crossing boundaries, you find the hottest wells south of Iceland, north of the Alps, with temperatures over 60 or even 70 degrees. So we have the examples, we have the geothermal Mine Water Project, again, crossing boundaries between the underground and the above ground using the old coal mines for heating and cooling. And Herman Eindoms will tell you all about it in a minute. But also crossing another boundary between the past and the future and using basically the work, you know, where Grant and our forefathers worked to excavate these manmade equivers and to dig the coal. It will reuse them like the buildings in Kerkrade are reused circular. It will be reused to heat the future generations in a sustainable way. But also in other places like Roemond, there are projects underway. Here in the middle of Limburg, they're working also on a fifth generation low temperature heating and cooling network that will be fed with waste heat from a paper mill. And interesting here is also that they have an open heat network so that more than one source can be plugged in and also more than one company could be involved in that system. so that more than one source can be plugged in and also more than one company could be involved in that in that system. Uh another interesting example is Hune Nette, the green heat network in Sittard-Hilene, which is using waste heat from the Camelot campus, uh chemical campus, uh where also the research campus of Brightlands is located. And actually, the 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 waste heat from the NAFTA cracker of Sabik, the Olefins IV will be used to heat Sittard and and Helene and possibly even, uh you know, a wider range of 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 cities. Um and I like to to put forward here an 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 challenging idea uh because this site is is directly placed like, uh you know, the sites in Ireland above the largest actually uh state mine we had in the Netherlands, the Maubit State Mine. And like in Ireland, you have a labyrinth of underground storage capacity. You know, all these corridors in the underground, they could probably well be used to store the heat from summer into winter. And if you would be able to do that, that would mean that you can, on the one hand side, have a backup uh capacity and at the same time, you know, increase uh the capacity of the waste heat because in summer you store it for the winter and this will almost double the capacity in the winter. So to to give you just a bit of impression of what other things we do nationally, one thing uh RVO is involved in is also the programma Arkestraveiken. So we're working on natural gas-free neighborhoods uh in a in a large program. And as you can see here, many of the examples are using district heating grids and some of them also low temperature heating and cooling grids. Um we are also, from the RVO side, uh supporting the municipalities with their heat transition plans. Uh therefore, we have established this expertise center for heat or ACV, Expertise Center for Environment in the Netherlands. And what we also do is to stimulate and support energy innovation and implementation. Uh we're the central funding agency in the Netherlands for energy innovation. And to give you an impression, last year we had uh over two hundred millions of euros to support research and development as well as pilot and demonstration projects in the energy field uh in the Netherlands. So if you have any ideas, any innovative ideas or plans, don't hesitate to contact us and uh you know, we we can talk about this. And another instrument that is really the central instrument in Netherlands is the SDE Plus. That is an instrument to to support the implementation and the transition to a CO2 uh low carbon society. And for that instrument, there is even five billion on the table, uh at least last year, and we expect uh next call come out in autumn. Roundling off, what we also do is work together internationally, framework of Geothermica. Uh that is cooperation between about half of the European countries and and the US now. We do joint calls in the field of of geothermal and storage, but also wider in the heating and cooling field. And we do joint strategic and knowledge activities. One of the 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 flagship projects there is actually the Heat Store Project. That project is working on heat storage in the underground, seasonal storage there, nine countries involved. In the Netherlands, we have a demonstration site in north of Amsterdam that has just been uh drilled two wells into a four hundred meter deep aquifer where uh heat at ninety degrees will be stored uh to heat the greenhouses there in combination with geothermal. Uh so that will be the first large scale example of bringing high temperature heat from the summer into the winter. And uh just an announcement here, we are expecting a call uh before summer on this heating and cooling subject within the framework of Geothermica. I see Zeger, and this brings me to my last slide, uh to my conclusions. Um I think it is clear, I hope it is clear from my presentation, that there will be no energy transition without a heating transition. And for that, heating transition, heating and cooling networks and seasonal storage are really key, are really crucial. Then innovation offers quite a lot of opportunities to make it cheaper, to make it work, to make it wider applicable. And for that, we also need to cooperate, I think. So I would say, let's work together, create a regional but also international innovation ecosystem around this heating and cooling transition. And with that, I would like to give back to give back the floor to Zeger and I apologize if I took a little bit longer and expected.
No, it it was perfect, uh Paul, because we started also a little bit later. Uh that is, uh but we have to keep a little bit uh on time because people were should be able to change from one to another session. Um I think we will keep the questions till the end. I just only want to mention that it is possible to ask the questions in um in the chat because till now I didn't get one, so I I repeated that it is possible in the chat to ask your question so that we can uh answer the question at the end of the session. I like to go uh to, uh of course, I like to say to thank Paul Ramzak for this nice presentation. It's a very nice overview, uh certainly about uh the many systems that we already have in Limburg. Um I like to go to the next speaker, to Thijss Papels. And uh he will give a presentation uh of working, work on energy in Limburg. And Thijss Papels is from the province of Limburg.
Thank you, Zeger. Um well, as Zeger is net, um I'm Thijss Papels. I work as a policy officer at the province of Limburg, which is the the government of the the province, the local government. Um I would like to tell you something about the way we are working um on energy in Limburg and uh in particular, our role in a in a innovative ecosystem in Limburg. Um first, a bit of context, um uh the national government worked on a a climate agreement uh in which they had uh what they call six climate tables, uh one for electricity, one for mobility, one for industry, one for agricultural um activities, one for the society and one for the built environment. And uh within the uh the the climate table of the built environment, um several uh programs uh rolled out of the the agreement. And uh two parts are uh very important for this context of the the district cooling and heating. Uh one is the the national program, a regional energy uh strategy in which um the uh the municipalities have to develop a strategy how to um transform from a fossil uh fossil based uh economy to a green or a renewed renewable energy uh system. Um and that's up to the municipalities. Um one other program, um the municipalities municipalities has have to uh do are the uh is the the program Fossil Free Districts. Um So both programs are um a challenge for the for the this, for the municipalities. Um but what we see as a province is that the the challenge is bigger than uh just um just a municipality. If you look at these pictures, uh you can see on the on the left hand side, you can see the the high range electricity net. Uh the second uh picture is the mid range and then both uh right uh pictures are uh geothermal and uh uh heat sources. Um and you can clearly see that these um this infrastructure and these sources, they are bigger than the the boundaries of a municipality. So actually, we're crossing um a boundaries here. So as a province, we uh strongly believe that the challenge is bigger than just a municipality, but is also very specific for the province of Limburg. Uh Limburg is completely different than, for example, uh Groningen or Friesland, which are close to sea or right next to sea and have possibilities to uh generate electricity with mill, windmills on sea. Uh we don't have that in the in Limburg, so we have to look for other ways. So the challenge is bigger than um uh the challenge for a municipality and it's uh specific for uh Limburg. So that's why we developed uh a provincial energy strategy uh in which we've got uh six action lines. Um the first one is a a future-proof infrastructure that fits the uh the new system. The second one is an environment for innovation, technology and craftsmanship. Um the third one is opportunities for Limburg heating and cooling, of course. Um we work on a social and fair energy transition. We set a good example and um we make sure that the energy transition is embedded in its surroundings. So it's not just technology based, it's also looking at um the context in in which it happens. Um action line two and three are in particular uh interesting for this case of the 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 heating and cooling systems we're talking about today. Uh so I'd like to tell you a bit more about these two action lines. Um the first one are actually action line two, um the environment for innovation, technology and craftsmanship. Um uh a a well-known uh uh concept is the concept of a a triple helix, uh which consists out of businesses, educational uh uh systems and the government. And what we as the uh the province of Limburg try to do is support that and strengthen it, strengthen the helix. And uh one of the ways we do that is by uh financial instruments. Um another thing um we do is the the Limburg Energy Agreement. So it's a an agreement on a uh scale, on the scale of the of the province uh in which uh the largest twenty five companies or businesses in Limburg are uh are based. Um we uh we've got the bright side, which is um uh a center of excellence to uh develop knowledge, to um uh develop technologies for the the chemical industry on the the Camelot side, of course, uh and uh work on C two reduction. Um and the fourth uh thing we do is the the human capital agenda, which is um um which decreases the gap between the needs from the businesses and the educational programs. We try to bring them closer and make sure education and the the needs from the businesses uh really fit. Um then the third action line is the opportunities for Limburg uh on heating and cooling. Um and here we also see three major components, um which is something the municipalities have to accomplish. Um the first one is energy savings uh with things like uh isolation. Make sure we uh reduce our energy uh use. Um second one is small scale production, uh which means uh produce uh energy with uh solar uh panels on a small scale, on uh roofs of of houses. Um and the third one is a fossil free heating, no natural gas. Um so uh things like uh heating systems. Um as a province, what we do here is also strengthen these three components. Uh and again, we do that with uh financial instruments. We facilitate uh financial support. Um but we also facilitate conditions for um aqua thermal uh systems, for geothermal systems, uh but also uh develop a framework for uh the use of biomass. Um we're also active uh in the lobby um to uh facilitate the conditions uh more, but um we do that by lobbying uh at a national level. Um and the fourth one is strategic planning because we've got uh an oversight of um uh all the different activities uh in the province of Limburg. Um there's one uh one instrument I'd like to highlight in this presentation. Um that's the the Limburg Energy Fund. Uh I really like this fund because since I'm the the account manager of this fund. Um it's a fund that is um uh it's it's a fund from the province of Limburg. Um and um it's meant to stimulate uh sustainable uh projects from businesses, the the SME, the small and medium enterprises. Uh we do that with a a revolving fund, which means um we uh we give credit to a uh to a business. Um they uh develop a a sustainable business and we get interest which uh we again use for other loans to other companies. Um the goals of this uh energy fund are a reduction of C two emission. Uh we try to boost circular economy, as enhance sustainable SME, the small and medium enterprises, and uh we do uh abatement of asbestos. Um the secondary, the secondary goals of this fund are uh creating jobs, improve conditions for living and their business. Um and we stimulate innovation. Um and well, this is a an old sheet uh from two thousand and nineteen uh about the the achievements of the uh of the fund. Uh and it's it's in Dutch, um but it gives a uh quite a good uh overview of what we what we achieved. Uh in two thousand and nineteen, we invested seventy three million or almost seventy four million in sustainable uh initiatives. Uh with that money, we uh invoked a a total investment of two hundred and eighty six million. Um and you can see the um the total amount of carbon reduction uh here. Um the amount of solar panels, um and uh this is reduction of nitrogen emissions, twenty thousand tons. Um we've got uh several uh projects. Um we work in the energy production, energy saving and waste reduction. And uh as you can see here in the energy savings, uh there's also uh the Mine Water Project. Um and uh Herman Items will tell you a bit more about that later. Um well, in summary, what I told today is uh the challenge of uh the energy transition or the transition to uh uh renewable uh uh heating and cooling, uh that exceeds the scale of a municipality, but is also very specific for Limburg. Um cooperation is necessary. Um and that's why the province of Limburg participates uh with the the provincial energy strategy, which uh consists out of six action lines. Um Maybe there's time for some questions or uh are we go going right next to the the next presentation uh? Zeger.
Sorry, I was I was reading the the chat and then uh there are coming in questions, so I think.
Maybe some questions? Because we gained some time because I made a hell of a pace.
You did, you did very well. You helped me to get uh back on time track because we start too late. And but that's no problem. In this session, the 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 it's not so tight as in other sessions we had. Uh but uh I think it's nice uh to do already one question to you. I see also two, two that can be done uh at the end. And I think one has also to do directly with your um with your job you are doing, and that is from uh Stefan, what is the niche, the left operates in? Does it in in invest in smaller companies or does it take more risk or accept lower returns than market capital? And maybe you can give there an answer directly on.
Uh well, we uh operate on a range uh from one hundred thousand euros to uh twenty million. Uh so from quite small to bigger. Um and I can, uh I think you can uh say the the Mine Water Project is is quite a big uh project. Uh but there are also uh projects with, that are just over the one hundred thousand euros. So it it, there's a lot of variation.
The second question is a little bit, and maybe we can also come later back uh with the lecture of the Mine Water Project, but um uh the comparison with the the capital the province has and market capital. Um uh do you as a province uh take more risk or accept lower uh interest of uh on the money uh you give to them?
Now, what what we do is, it's actually a a very good question and something I should have mentioned in the in the presentation. Um what we do is uh uh several years ago, we seen there is a a gap between um innovations and what um uh the traditional uh investors and what the traditional investors are willing to invest to. And that gap, that's where we step in. And we, in that way, we make it possible for innovative initiatives to get sufficient funding to start their business. And very often, it's, we provoke other investors to join us because there's enough certainty. Because we step in as one of the co-financers, other financiers step in too. So we always work with co-financers. So it's not, it's never just the province. And all the investments are screened. And one of the criteria is that other investors have to. Well, it has to be clear, other investors don't want to invest in this proposal without something like LEF.
I think we, maybe at the end we will discuss longer on it, but I think it's a good first answer on the question. And I want to thank you for the very nice presentation. So it gives a very nice overview what the province for energy transition has. So there was also quite a lot of news in for me. And I'd like to go to the next speaker from the region of Parkstad Limburg, Bim Derwoud. And his title of his presentation is "The Heat Transition Vision: The Potential for Heating and Cooling in Parkstad Limburg."
Perfect. Thank you. I seem to be having some difficulties. Can you see my screen with the presentation on it?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I can only see a blank screen. Okay, thank you.
I will put my sound out.
Perfect. Thank you for the introduction. Also, thank you to the previous two speakers. I think they have already taken some of the things that I wanted to talk about and briefly explain that to you so I can build on top of that. My name is Bim Derwoud. I am a policy officer with the city region of Parkstad Limburg, working mainly on the topics of energy transition, climate change, adaptation and the circular economy. And in today's presentation, I'll be focusing on the potential for heating and cooling in Parkstad Limburg. Taking you through this presentation, we'll talk a little bit about the differences between the energy transition and the heating transition and how they fit together. We have already talked about the Tonsitzifizie Wante, the heat transition vision. I will briefly introduce also the guidelines that the regions and the municipalities have to follow. These are set nationally, regions and municipalities cannot just decide unilaterally what to do. Identify the potential for parks that Limburgs are really built on the first presentation and look at what the potential is then in this particular case. And finish off by identifying a number of potential bottlenecks for this transition. So while the, while energy policy has really been an important subject in the Netherlands since the nineteen sixties and the oil crisis, as Paul has presented in his first presentation. It was not until relatively recently that energy transition has really made it onto the political agenda. It was in two thousand and thirteen when then eight municipalities in the city region of Parkstad Limburg combined their efforts to develop a joint energy transition policy, Parkstad Limburg Energy Transition, or PALETT for short. With PALETT, we developed a shared ambition. In two thousand and forty, we want to be an energy neutral region. And we also investigate on the one hand the potential for energy savings and on the other hand, the potential for renewable energy generation. Following that, these long-term goals were translated into a short-term, four-year program for two thousand and sixteen until two thousand and twenty. And we are currently in the process of turning that into a program for the foreseeable future for the next four years. At this point, though, the energy transition still largely revolved around the subject of electricity, something that we can also see in other countries like, for example, Germany. The Energiewende has been very important, but die Heattransition has only recently started to play a more important role. Most buildings at the time were and still are connected to the national gas grid, which by comparison to other countries around us, offers a relatively clean and stable supply of energy to need people's heating labs, particularly if you compare it to coal and oil-powered power plants. So where countries around us are now making the transition to gas, there are quite a lot of questions in municipalities by local councils and citizens, why we are doing things differently here. And at the time of PALETT, there was also relatively little knowledge and expertise on sustainable or small-scale heating networks in the region and particularly in local government. Leinwarte, the presentation of the following next, being a notable exception in this case. Now, in two thousand and nineteen, following the Paris Climate Agreement four years earlier, the Dutch government also announced its own climate agreement, pledging to reduce CO two emissions by forty nine percent in two thousand and thirty and ninety five percent in two thousand and fifty. Now, on the one hand, that led to the creation of thirty so-called energy regions, die Gegenhalle Energiestrategie, to develop plans for onshore wind and solar photovoltaics. On the other hand, you also have the Tonsitzifizie Wante, where local governments are required to develop visions for a heating transition. And Paul has already mentioned in his presentation, by two thousand and thirty, twenty percent of all buildings are expected to be disconnected from the national gas grid, natural gas grid. And they also have to give a picture of the alternatives for natural gas for all neighborhoods. By the end of this year, so by the end of two thousand and twenty one, these local heat transition visions have to be approved by their respective local councils, also indicating which neighborhoods they will start in. Now, to support local governments, the Expertise Centre for Heat has asked the Netherlands Environmental Assessment Agency, PBL, to develop a resource, the so-called Start Analyse or Start Analysis. Now, this Start Analysis is a technical and economic analysis on the basis of nationally available data and key figures. It offers a first picture of the technical and environmental consequences of five CO two neutral heating strategies on a neighborhood level. It looks, for example, at the national costs, the energy demand of the alternatives and the CO two reduction achieved by them. This first version was published in September or sorry, October two thousand and nineteen. What happened afterwards is that the nationally available data were corrected or in some cases supplemented with locally available information, resulting in the publication of a renewed version in two thousand and twenty. And that included then, for example, some local heat sources that were previously left out or it corrected the amount of heat available from individual sources. For example, in the case where residual heat from production processes is already reused in the production process or some companies that have moved away out of the Parkstad region and had moved somewhere else. These five strategies are presented on the slide here. First, the individual electric heat pumps. Second and third, a heat network with either in strategy two, a medium or high temperature source or in strategy three, a low temperature source. And in this Start Analysis, they also look at green gas and hydrogen. However, we also know that due to the limited availability of green gas and hydrogen in the near future, so for at least two thousand and thirty, these will not play a very important role in the energy transition or in the heating transition. The focus therefore is mostly on the first three strategies. Now, the model's calculations are based on different kinds of heat sources, different types of insulation measures. Do we insulate a level B, energy label B or D? And also different release temperatures associated with that for tap water and heating. It has to be said, the lowest national cost definition does not mean that this will also be the cheapest option for consumers. Costs are shown here in relation to avoided CO two emissions. So an expensive solution that saves a lot of CO two may come out as the preferred strategy in this model. What also plays an important role is the availability and location of heat sources relative to potential users that influences the cost calculations of heat networks, the strategies two and three. So in additional to the nationally available data, on a Parkstad level, we carried out an additional quick scan of potential heat sources to get a better idea of their location, their availability and their potential viability. No business case at this point has yet been calculated, nor have individual costs for consumers been taken into account. Now, this slides also brings me to the first observations. So as you can see in the slide, or it's more in this case, but what you can see, options for the storage of thermal energy are not explicitly included in these five strategies. And for both electricity and heating, local and regional governments are required to focus largely on existing and proven technologies to meet the two thousand and thirty targets. That makes it difficult for innovative technologies to further develop along the innovation curve. Looking then at the map of Parkstad, we mapped the different scenarios in the model. And if we look at the first scenario, the assumption here in two thousand and nineteen would be that there is sufficient medium to high temperature sources available. Green gas only plays a very limited role. And what we see here in this picture then is that particularly in the highly built-up areas, there is a lot of potential for heat networks with a medium to high release temperature for tap water and heating. In the less densely built-up areas, particularly in the three more rural municipalities on the western flank of Parkstad, even with sufficient heat available, we see that individual solutions such as the electric heat pump have lower national costs. And to put it simply, as Paul mentioned in his presentation as well, the heating network would have to span a larger geographical surface with less users per square meter, which results in a higher cost per household. In two thousand and twenty, we also modeled another scenario where we assumed sufficient availability of green gas in the short-term future, either produced locally or nationally or imported from abroad. But the availability of medium to high temperature sources are adjusted on the basis of this additional research. And the national assumption was found to be too high, particularly for medium to high temperature sources. And that's originally lower or substantially lower than originally estimated. And in that particular case, we can see that particularly in the rural municipalities of Furenau and Beeggala, they turn almost completely green. That would be the option with the lowest national cost in relation to CO two reductions. But also in the less densely populated areas of the urban center, green gas could start to play an important role. Also, with less medium to high temperature sources available, low temperature sources start to play a more important role. With energy label D, however, which is modeled here, households will almost certainly need a way to upgrade that heat to a sufficiently high level to ensure living comfort. That could be on the level, could be done on the level of individual households, but it could also be done on a neighborhood level. Now, what we have done for Parkstad then as well, knowing that hydrogen will be, it's unlikely that it will be available for the built environment until two thousand and thirty, at least not on a large scale outside of some small local innovation labs. And also green gas will have a limited availability. So what we did is we modeled the scenario without the availability of green gas and with limited availability of medium to high temperature sources. This, what we feel most closely reflects the current reality. And on this side, you can see that until two thousand and thirty, individual electric heat pumps will be the scenario with the lowest national cost for a large majority of neighborhoods in Parkstad. And lower temperature networks may be a preferential choice, particularly in the more densely populated parks of Parkstad. Again, it doesn't say anything about the individual costs for households. Low-temperature solutions in particular require cost-intensive insulation measures to get them to label B or even higher. And what's also important is that such a large shift to electric alternatives would have a significant impact on the electricity grid. We'd likely need more substations. And the question is also in the shift to renewables, how are we going to generate this electricity? Are we going to import it or will we have to do that within our own region? The effects are not yet fully clear, but what's important is that the regional grid operator in NEXIS is closely following developments and participating in these sessions to develop the heating strategy for Parkstad as well. Fortunately though, we have until two thousand and fifty to complete this transition, which means that we can start with those neighborhoods that are deemed to be the most promising in terms of short-term potential. Take these no-retreat measures. And in the coming years, it is extremely important that we learn from these cases to early adopters and take these lessons for the neighborhoods that we start doing after two thousand and thirty. And that takes me then also to the bottlenecks. So first of all, from a technological perspective, the focus on these proven and cost-effective technologies makes it difficult for new and unproven technologies to get a foot in the door. The advice from this perspective would be that, and it's perhaps not entirely satisfactorily, but do pilots become proven technologies, both in terms of affordability, reliability and sustainability? And what's also important that you deliver these cost-key figures in order to get this solution as a strategy in the national model, that means that we can work with them. Technically, based on this local validation of the data, we conclude that at least for now also, there appear to be insufficient heat sources available to meet energy demand within the region. So that means we also have to look on a larger scale. Within the regional energy strategy, we also investigate the potential on the scale of South Limburg, looking for example at Het Koolenet, which is outside of the Parkstad region, but could play a very important role. But also looking at cross-border initiatives. The city of Heftenrad, for example, is just over the border in Karakade and may offer potential cross-border heat sources. The national legislation does not necessarily allow the cross-border exchange of energy. It's a little bit more easy for heat than it is for electricity. So therefore, we have also asked the government to be an experimental region so we can have more experience with this that we can also share on a national level. Then financially, the Economic Institute of Building for Building has calculated that the average cost of disconnecting homes from this natural gas grid and onto alternatives is around forty thousand euros. And at least half of that investment cannot be recouped through lower energy costs. Now, there are also test bets that take into account costs of ten thousand to twenty thousand euros per home. But in some cases, these studies disregard necessary investments, apply less realistic financial assumptions or they start with neighborhoods that already have more favorable characteristics than others. The Economic Institute for Building has also considered it unlikely that costs will decrease significantly in the coming years. It was presupposed that an industrialized and innovation-based approach in the Netherlands would result in a reduction of costs, but it is not yet borne out in practice. And this could be that we are still in the very early stages of this heating transition, but this could really be a cause for concern for the two thousand and thirty targets. Then really practical, one reason that this industrialized approach does not take off, or it hasn't just yet, is because there appears to be no one-size-fits-all solution. In many cases, a tailor-based approach is required. And while a neighborhood may seem like a united whole on first glance, there are often many big differences between homes and the socioeconomic situation of its occupants. If you look at an elderly couple, for example, they may have very different motivations from a young family with two children next door or a single person household living two doors down. And if somebody has recently renovated or spent quite a bit of money renovating their home in the last five years, how likely are they to be to do so in the next ten to fifteen? Finally, I would also like to point out the issue of governance. As a result of the climate agreement, many municipalities were faced with extra tasks and responsibilities without an increase in capacity. And what we have also learned from experience in the last few. And what we have also learned from experience in the last few years is that a high degree of specialized knowledge is required, both technical and from a legal perspective. And there are actually very few people in the Netherlands who are able to do this, and they're in very high demand. So particularly for smaller municipalities, it may not always be possible to organize this. What we did therefore in Parkstad is that we have decided to collaborate and pool resources. Since 2019, we have worked with an external heat coordinator to support municipalities in this endeavor. So this person who has a lot of experience on a national level supports all seven municipalities in this endeavor. And just, I know that the list on the previous slide may sound a little bit disheartening, but I think it's important to remember that we are in the early stages of this heat transition. And this is a long process or a period of change from one state to another. As you can see in the arrow, we are really at the early stages. Let's learn from these experiences. This is something that we have also seen in the electricity transition. And as yeah, within the region, in Limburg and in the Netherlands, we learn from these experiences. We hope that we can move further along this innovation curve. So that's all from my presentation, and then I'll leave it to the moderator to decide whether we will take questions now or the plenary at the end.
Thank you for your presentation. It's a nice presentation and I think we will keep the question till the end. Then we still have some 15 minutes at the end to have a discussion with the total group. I'd like to continue with the next speaker. Herman You can put on the call yourself, as you call it always in Limburg, the Mine Water Project, the very innovative project on heating and cooling in Haaland.
Yes, good morning. My name is Herman A items. I'm a Director of Innovations and Strategy at the Mine Water Company. We were pronounced a long time as a project and actually we started this project from Interreg from that subsidy, but and part of the city of Haaland. But now we are becoming a real utility company. More or less 35 people working now and we have invested already between 40 and 50 million euros in our network and expanding that to a bigger area. And now I have some trouble. Yes, that's the thing. Well, the original idea was that if you go down in the earth and if you go down deeper, you find higher temperatures. And we had this former mine galleries and shafts in the south of the Netherlands where we knew that they were filled up with water. After that, we stopped pumping. And that water should have a higher temperature. We expected about 30 degrees at the lowest levels, which could be used to heat up buildings. From this idea, this project was started. If you look at those galleries and my father was a mine worker, he was in those galleries. He knows those pictures. And imagine that they are filled up with water. Then you find a huge amount of water underground. We actually in the city of Haaland, we have about eight million cubic meters of water there. And then if we, the first idea was if you go to a very deep level, about seven, 800 meters below surface, then you would find this 30 degree water and can take it out, heat up the buildings and return it somewhere midway at the 500 meters. But also on the higher levels, where we are now 200 meters below surface, we find cold water and could use the same for cooling those buildings. So we made a switch over system, taking cold water in summer, cooling, providing cooling and taking the hot water in winter. Then we came at the stage that this project ended. We had connected two buildings, the CBS building and in Haaland Highness Centrum, a number of social housing. And when such a project ends, everybody drops it out of his hands and and we don't know how to go further. So we had to find out at that stage how this would develop in time further. And found out that we had to connect more buildings, but those mine water sources, and then we had two heat sources and two wells and two cold wells. And we had now investment money to build more sources. So we had to think about this network, the grid on the ground, how to make it more efficient, to make it more smart, so that we could provide more heating and cooling to buildings. And one of the essential steps that we did here was that we said we are gonna modify those wells, we make them bidirectional, so we can reinject heat in summer in the hot well and we can reinject cold. And then actually, we don't need a return well. So apart from the geothermal heat, which is coming up through this water to the surface, which we always can take out, we also could use this big huge amount of water as a storage for heat and cold. Well, this is the idea. Paul also showed us a picture. We had this big industry about 56 years ago in the Sparkstad region. But now if we look at this bottom, and we can calculate if we take one liter and we can make a difference of 12 degrees Celsius, then you can store or take out 14 watt hours. That's not a lot. But actually, if you look and say, if we have about six cubic meters of water, that's the same amount of thermal storage that we could do with a Tesla battery. And the life cycle of this water is endless. You can, you can charge and charge as often as you want. And then calculating back and say, how much thermal storage do we have in the city of Haaland? Then you could calculate that it would be about 1.4 million tesla. And that was a quote that made the newspapers because they think, well, that sounds interesting. Well, then I said, we are further developing as an utility company. We have existing connections now, it's a number of connections, about 250,000 square meter. And we are looking further to the city of Haaland where we can expand the system. We have their four clusters, but also to the city of Brunsum and the city of Karakade to start a mine water project in all the region of Parkstad Limburg. Actually, there is a graph at the right side, which is showing how what we have to do then. We can see that if you have like kind of third generation district heating cooling, then you can make a profit of 5%. Then if we go and scale up on this system, you can up 2% because scaling up makes everything cheaper. Optimization of the technique can give us an additional 0.7% and then standardization 0.2%. That's what we calculate now. Actually, I think from my point, technical point of view, that this optimization and standardization can give us huge, bigger advantages. There are studies also from, from within Europe showing that this technology can go down in price about 20 to 30% if we scale up on the larger, larger scales. Actually, this is a kind of regional energy strategy that we see in many cities and many areas. On the one side, we have to build up green sources and all kinds of sources, wind and solar and geothermal and hydro power more and more in time. And on the other side, we try to save energy in the different sectors like dwellings, like industry, transport. And if those lines overcross each other, then we would be energy neutral. And actually, there is a problem with this strategy because we need some additional measures. And one of that is that this green energy should be available at the right moment, it should match with the demand. We have to bring it to the right place because the sources are not always at the same location where the demand is. And also, we have to look at the right temperatures. Well, then I have a picture, two pies and is showing the energy consumption of the Netherlands. It's the figures of Central Bureau of Statistics. And on the left side, you see the pie for 1990, that was about 30 years ago. And on the right side, you see the pie for 2019. And there are some remarkable things in these pictures. So at first, if we look at dwellings, you see that they only are about 13% of the total energy amount. You see other sectors like the energy sector, which uses, loses 536 beta joules, which is more than the total amount that dwellings need. Industry is above 1,000 beta joule. And we know in this energy flows like industry, which needs high temperatures for all kinds of processes and that they waste, have a waste flow of energy, which is at least, I think, about 50% of this amount. Also, you see that we didn't save energy. This, so this first curve, we are gonna save in 30 years energy, while in the past 30 years, we only have an increase of 7%, more than 7% of energy consumption. Well, it's not in dwellings. In dwellings though, you see that we saved 10%. But if you look to the total picture, we see you're just increasing the total energy consumption. Another thing is how much of this energy now is sustainable, green energy? And actually, we are still in this picture at about 7 to 8% green energy, meaning that we have still an amount of more than 92% fossil energy consumption in the Netherlands. Second picture, and that's one that was Paul addressing also, that's if we look at the quality of this energy. So if we make an analysis and look at the demand side of a balance, then we see that quite a large amount is high exergy, is high graded energy that we need. And a smaller part, maybe 25%, could be filled in with low graded energy. I always say we cannot fly airplanes with lukewarm water, but we can heat up buildings with lukewarm water. So you could make a split up how you use this energy. On the other side, on the right side, you see the sources. And actually now, if I said the 7% sources like solar or wind is high exergy source, biomass also, green gas also. But then only you have a very small part. And even if we double or three double or four double this amount of solar and wind energy and biomass that we can provide, you will see that still a large part should actually, could actually be filled in with a low temperature waste heat. And now it would be a very strange strategy if you use those high exergy sources on the right side to fill in the lower exergy need what you see on the left side. And if you have this kind of strategy, then it will come very hard to get a fossil free society within 30 years. Well, this is a picture of this. I already told her this, those energy plants, they are cooling down with about 500 beta joule, which is more than the total amount, actually 1.5 the total amount what we need for dwellings. And often this energy is just spoiled away. We see the big data centers and the energy plants and they are both heating up rivers and the sea with their waste heat. This is another one. If we're gonna look to cities and we see that even in the city, and that is interesting because you have a very nearby to the, where you have the demand of energy, that we see a growing amount of waste of heat in cities going into the air. Actually, if we look at the energy consumption, at 35% of the total amount of energy now is used for cooling. If you look at big cities like New York, we see that they have the peak demands on cooling. Actually, in the mine water system now, our peak in cooling is 1.5 higher already than we have on heating. So we have higher cooling demands and higher cooling peaks than we have on the heating side. And this cooling, if you make this kind of fans on buildings, on roofs, and then they will contribute to heating up the city. And we, if we look at urban heat islands, we already see that cities are getting five to eight degrees higher than the rural area. So if we have about 35 degrees in the rural, then the city will go over 40 degrees. With global warming adding up two degrees, this might give us cities in future, which at some spots get 45 degrees Celsius. There's also a lot of sound of this equipment. And if you start thinking in biomass and burning bio, then you also will get fine dust and anoxins in cities that you don't want in this environment. The sources of wind and solar, we know they are fluctuating. Also, Tim already gave these, these pillars of energy consumption. I say, we have to make sure that it's available, available all the time, that everybody has access to this energy. That's affordable. And then we try to do this with minimal impact on, on the environment. So actually, if you don't have this energy at the spot where you need it, you need to build a grid. And that can be different kinds of infrastructures. It can be the electrical power grid, but also a thermal grid. And those grids, you could characterize them. And we see the central grids like the electrical power plants, they are organized as a central grid. But also we see in, on the electric side, that those grids get decentralized. If we build a lot of TV panels on location, then districts will, will get some kind of autonomy in providing their own energy and only have partially dependent on the, on the central plants. And in the IT sector, we saw actually a movement further, that we go to cloud grids and say, there's a huge number where you have sources, where you can store energy. And they are all connected and probably not with one line, but different connections to other nodes in this grid and exchanging energy. And that's actually what we are trying to do also in the thermal grid of mine water, that we move towards this kind of cloud solutions. Actually, there is enough energy. If we look at solar, then we only need 2% of our solar radiation and we can provide all the need for buildings that we have. But then the red area is space heating, the green one, domestic hot water and the blue one, electricity from an average dwelling in the Netherlands. And if you look what you can gain from solar, you see a yellow area in this picture that needs to be stored and needs to be transferred, brought to the winter period. And how much is that? If you start calculating again on those figures, we can, we can calculate if we do this with normal car batteries and the ones that we can buy now in buildings in the yeah, at auto provision shops, then we would need about 10,000 of those car batteries to, to save this energy and to use it in winter. Some people say, if we all have a Tesla, we can use it, we can charge it and load it also for building needs. And when we need that, but then you would need a T Tesla. And the same amount of energy could be stored in 450 cubic meter of mine water. Then if you look at these kind of solutions, how we, how would want to address the city? Then we say, well, we have sources and that source could be an aquifer somewhere 10 degrees Celsius. It could also be outside air, which could be in the worst case minus 10 degrees Celsius. And we are lucky in Parkstad, we have mine water, which is about 25. And on this level already, you want to build a storage and say, we have some sources, geothermal through which aquatermy subway, so this kind of very low temperature sources could be stored on the city level. But it's low temperature. If you want to overbridge 30 degrees Celsius from minus 10 to plus 20 in the building, and you can get sources which are plus 10, already you have 65% of the bridge is half the gap is bridged then by those low temperature sources. Then on the neighborhood or district level, we want to level up, increase this temperature by increase this temperature by basic heat pumps, which which could do a weather dependent temperature and provide space heating from that. And there you could have another storage with other sources like industry waste heat or solar thermal or conversion waste heat. Go to the buildings on this higher level and then finally in the building, if you have the higher domestic hot water temperatures or some buildings which need high space heat temperatures, we have a booster heat pump with again a small storage which could be fed by like solar collectors. This is how all district heating systems look like. It's the second generation. Actually, many of them now are third generation and going in towards fifth generation. And you see the central plant, it's using coal, it's using gas and oil. And then the second generation is also providing electricity, improving the efficiency of those central plants. And then it's feeding a grid with a temperature about one hundred degree and going down in the in the higher generations and then delivering this energy to end consumers. Actually, those many of those utility companies don't look too much at end consumers. They are just focusing on the central plant and on the grid. There are some disadvantages of those systems. So one of the things is that you have to provide on every spot, that you have always to design the system on the weakest spot, like domestic hot water. Actually, we use that twenty minutes a day. But in the central systems, you have to provide this this high temperature twenty-four seven, which means that eighty-nine percent of the individual consumer and you are providing hot water at the front door while they are not using it. This is what we have built up now in the city of Heelen in this mine water grid, a double loop windpipe system, a warm pipe at twenty-eight degree and a cold pipe at sixteen. We have the central storage already in the mine water reservoirs. We use electricity and that's the only thing we use, so we are totally calcium free. If we go to the consumers, we have decentralized energy stations where we give heat. But if we give heat, we get called back, so we close the loop. But also if they have some waste heat, we can, if it's above thirty degree, we can directly inject it in our grid and use it for the energy provision of the city. If we have like solar collectors on schools, which are not used in summer, we can use this energy and add it to the system. And actually, at this amount of the new buildings, we see the thirty-five percent of cooling, we can take it back and use it for heating up. Also an advantage, if we have these heat pumps, they get a very constant source in comparison to airborne heat pumps, which which have to run in winter time at minus five, heat up the building and in summertime when it's maybe on a roof fifty degree, they have to cool down from this source, the building. We have those constant sources, we always give twenty-five degree water, which is very powerful source for the heat pump. So we get a very good efficiency on those heat pumps. This is Arthur's impression of the system.
Do you think about the time? Can you finish in about two, three minutes?
Yeah, I will do my best, Zegar, to speed up. So here you see if this one building needs cooling, then the transport pump starts running, taking order from the cluster grid. If another building needs heating it, there the pump will start running and those pumps will automatically make that those buildings exchange their energy. If not, that comes to a cluster basement that we have. And there we can exchange between clusters. And then if we have a net heat demand over the system or cooling demand, then we go back into the mine water reservoir. Well, actually, we have been thinking, well, this is what we are doing. And then we get to the five principles as we now define the fifth generation district heating cooling. One is close this energy loop. The second, use low graded sources if you have a low graded demand. The third, design decentralized and demand-driven systems. An integrated approach of energy flows. So if we can use waste heat from electricity sector, transport sector or industry and bring them into your building sector. And the last, local sources should be used as a priority. So don't stop thinking in the solar fields in the Sahara if it's in your backyard. Well, then if we look at what it brings to the city, we see that we have besides the energy and the carbon saving, a lot of advantages which would fit very good into future city developments. I don't go into details now, due to time. This is an interesting picture I want to show. So if we have the average dwelling with about twenty thousand kilowatt hours, then we want to do some saving, not eighty percent, but maybe thirty, forty percent. Remaining like fourteen thousand kilowatt hours what we have to give. If we bring back doing cooling and waste energy, we can cover seven thousand. So there's only seven thousand left. With a very good heat pump, we bring it back to less than two thousand kilowatt hours of electricity. And then you can see in cities, this is an amount of green energy that you could get from your roof if you have ten solar panels, you would match those two thousand. Renovation concept, one of the aspects is that we want, what's really getting important, that we can do it quickly without little disturbance. So you can do something in the roof, you can do something on the floor and you can change the glazing. And with those measures, you see that you get a label improvement. But more important, that the temperature on your radiator can go down about twenty degrees Celsius. Then that's a more difficult one, a balanced ventilation. But I think it's really necessary to to think about this and to build this into buildings to bring back the peak demand and to bring back the the heat losses. But also bringing back the temperature back to fifty degree. And then the last step, you can connect such a building to a low temperature heating grid like mine water. And what you do is that you try to find the optimum between investments and buildings. We know if we build up this investments higher and higher, the last cubic meter of gas would cost you a million. But you also find an optimum on a regional district level and with relative low cost can do savings on this district level. Then I have some examples, this is the Mount Quatier, a very nice example. We have our office there. It's fully serviced by mine water, heating and cooling and domestic hot water. We have a mix of functions, so this is ideal kind of complex where our fifth generation grid works optimum. This is some examples of buildings that we have now connected from office buildings to sports center to renovation of buildings. And this is picture of how we build those cluster basements, which are actually exchange stations between the cluster grid and the mine water background. Few more pictures, we do this prefabricated, which makes the process very quickly with little disturbance for people around these sites. And also use prefabrication and modulation to get gains on the cost side. This is a picture of energy plants on the right side, the energy plant of Mount Quatier, where we have the heat pumps, giving the first step of temperature leverage from the mine water temperature to the space heating level. In the middle, what people have in their individual home, very small booster heat pump with a boiler vessel of about one hundred to two hundred liters storage of high temperature. Then we have to build a grid, there is a number of things. Then if you build these grids where you have to take into account, we have flora areas, we have monumental, archaeological remains, we have pollution in the ground, all these kind of things you have to take into account to build those systems. And this is an idea, how you could do a small neighborhood, bring the heat pumps in also in the basement. We built one now in the city of Brunsen. And those buildings get a kind of shed, which contains all the insulations that you need for the renovation of the building. So it's domestic water, space heating, ventilation, all in one prefabricated module. The same for high-rise buildings.
I'm ready to ask you to finish the presentation because we can't do otherwise.
One minute, I'm nearly, I'm nearly ready. So on high-rise buildings, you could build this kind of columns. We have actually designed them, we, if you have a patent on this development. And you have prefabricated installations again, which you bring into this building and try to do it very smooth and quickly. Number of innovation projects that we are involved in and a number of backreading reports and awards that we won from mine water. And that's the end, Zegar.
Thank you. Thank you for the very nice presentation. I like the mine water always a lot. So we got also some questions in so that we can, we can do together. We came, we came to the final, to the final part of our session. If the speakers can turn all on their camera. So what I mentioned already in the open session, that we, I hope we get some time to discuss in general about it. But first I want to ask the public or the remarks, questions to the speakers. I caught them by chat and I will, I have for each speaker a question. And the first is Paul, it's a little while ago that you talked, so we had a question from Steph Boosten. What is the status of the thermal storage Gune Net? And what's exactly the stage, is still an idea or it's a clear plan? And I want to add to it to the question, the same for Smefit Kappa in Rijmendt. Are it ideas or are the clear plans that will be arranged in the coming years?
Yeah, let me start with Rijmendt. In Rijmendt, the plans are already quite advanced. So the consortium of NG and Pulse together with, let's say, the province and also the municipalities are working on that. Plans are being elaborated. They could make it today to this session, but they are really quite advanced and they hope to get to a final investment decision somewhere during this year or early next year. So that would be another low temperature heating and cooling grid, fifth generation kind of approach. For the Gune Net, of course, the Gune Net already exists, but I I think the question was referring to the idea that was put forward on the slide to use the underground mine work as high temperature storage. I think at the moment, this is still an idea. But from my perspective, it's definitely an idea that is worthwhile to look further into, to explore further. And and these would be the kind of innovations I think we should take on together and look into together. And as Pim also mentioned, I think, you know, in the in the in the national approaches in the staff analysis, you know, all the figures are based on what we have now. But we should be open somehow to to innovations towards the future. And like storage options are not in these models at all. So then it doesn't come out of any model if it's not in the model. But as a matter of fact, we are already doing it, mine water is doing it at lower temperatures. In the heat stop projects, we are doing it at high temperatures in the north of Netherlands and other places. And this could probably also be done in Chilean connected to the Gune Net.
Thank you for the for the answer. We will hear in the chat or you satisfied with the answer. So that is of course always the possibility. Then I like to go to the second speaker with all, we had already one question, but another question are, are there already, and the question is from Peter Brans, are there already actual examples of small scale production in the Netherlands and then mainly in Limburg?
Yeah, there are. And I think the question is focused on the Limburg Energy Fund.
Yeah.
With the, the, then the Limburg Energy Fund gave a loan to several, loans to several businesses amongst which a plantation, which has a biomass, a unit now for heating instead of natural gas. And well, there's another question about biomass, so there's a, there's a nice link between these two. The, the, the Energy Fund also always uses a strict policy. We've got an investment regulation to make sure that that all the investments are actually sustainable. So also for the for the biomass, there are strict criteria. And one thing we look at, for example, is the, the regulations that are used for the for the SDE subsidy, which is a, I think it's a good, a good way to measure.
Okay, thank you. And again, I will hear from the the one that asked the question or he is satisfied. Then I'd like to go to the to the third speaker, to Pim. What types of knowledge and expertise from the municipality? I have to look carefully in the chat. What types of knowledge and expertise are the, sort of what skills you training and education programs focus on? And the question is again from Stefan Boosten.
Yes, so two, two important things is technical expertise. Enriching the start analysis with local data will not always be easy for small municipalities, both in terms of knowledge and capacity, but also the technical expertise in terms of judging these complex business cases, how to make sense of them, that can be quite complex. And also legal expertise in regards of the changing energy laws, the Werra Meevieds Tweedep Mill, for example. What are municipalities allowed to do, what are they not allowed to do? That is not expertise that all municipalities have. So also in this sense, it makes sense if these municipalities share resources. If one legal expert, for example, from a municipality actually really focuses on this, then they can also help the others.
Okay, thank you. The last, for the last speaker, there was a question in more general way. So put mine water here, work in the region, could you use it on a larger scale in the region? And you mentioned all the already a little bit in the talk. But could you bring mine water to my strength? I think that is maybe the easy way to say it.
Yeah, okay, I can answer. At first, we have, we use now two mines, former mines, and we know there is nine more. So you could do quite a big area with this mine water energy. But if we look at the other side of the border, we want to also to cooperate with the German side, where they have one, one hundred forty mines in the rural area. We have a pilot already in one of our projects in the city of Bochum. The other answer is if you look at this picture of aggregation levels, if you don't have the mine reservoir, you need some other, you want some other storage on on city level. And that could be an aquifer, but also could that be like an ecofot, other kind of provisions on the city level to keep this low temperature energy storage there.
Okay, thank you for the, for the answers. I want to thank all the speakers for for the presentations and to give answers to the questions from the public. And I think for the next meeting, because we had also some questions in general about, because still heating and cooling systems are innovative, heating and cooling systems are still limited and not on a, on a large scale on this moment in the Netherlands. What barriers are on this moment present that that could be accelerated, that that can grow faster because it's very important, we are on a very low level, what Paul has mentioned. We will do that in additional meetings in the Netherlands. So we will come back on this, on this subject a number of times, the coming year. So we are planning to organize, if everything is normal again, to do to round tables about this subject and about these things. And we will organize that the South and FBO will do that together. And we expect that the the next follow-up meeting of this will take place is September, October of of this year. And then we will also take more time for the round table. Because I see that there is a lot of information present that we first share. And I think the next time we can go more in detail in the discussion. It's already a little bit later than eleven o'clock, so I I did not look exactly on the time. But I want to, I want to close the session on this moment. And I hope you will have a nice conference and maybe we'll see each other at the closing session. Thank you, goodbye.
Bye.
Hi Paul. Ja, dan hou je al van de moment. Ja. Ja, ja, dat is wel prima.